The meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
All board members are present and accounted for.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will move on to public comment. Per Board Bylaw 0167.3, speakers will be placed in two groups. However, this evening, we only have our speakers this evening are from the parent, CCS parent guardian group, so we will only need to do one group. Comments at these sessions must be on agenda items, and then participants must be recognized before beginning their comments. When you begin your comments, please give an announcement of your name and group affiliation. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the board. No person may address or question individual board members. The school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under advisement. And Dr. O has already placed the people in the fancy bingo basket. And so we will call your names. I'm going to give first the person who will speak and then the person who is on deck. So up first to speak is Jennifer Hirschberger, and on deck is Jim May. And as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak, and we have 30 total minutes slated for public comment. Your countdown time will be on the screen.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hirschberger. I am a CCS parent of two, one in high school, one in college now. And I'm here to talk about the book challenge policy. We're at a tipping point in 2024 in a lot of ways, and I don't think I even need to go into any more detail on that. But I think we're kind of in a battle for between scarcity fear and restriction and generosity, trust, and honest communication. Our media specialists are professionals, and if we hire them, we should trust them to do their jobs. The current Indiana code in regard to the rules behind this that the media specialists use applies only if the average adult or prevailing standards in the adult community find a book offensive. That means one parent or one board member is not the arbiter of acceptability for all. There are things that we should challenge, like assumptions, intent, someone's motivation, dogma, the way generations before us deem it appropriate to behave or what is acceptable or not, a bully, and we should challenge ourselves. We should not be challenging books, and we certainly should not be banning them. The world is all around us, and books give us context and understanding and ideas for discussion, just like a revered book many of us might refer to. We do not need to be afraid of the truth. And I'm sure everyone is familiar with Judy Blume, and I don't know how much time I have left here, but I think these words really, well, they resonated with me. "I believe that censorship grows out of fear, and because fear is contagious, some parents are easily swayed. Book banning satisfies their need to feel in control of their children's lives. This fear is often disguised as moral outrage. They want to believe that if their children don't read about it, their children won't know about it. And if they don't know about it, it won't happen." And that's from Judy Blume, who I personally met. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jim May. On deck is Jeff Bolt.
Hi, I'm Jim May. I'm a parent with two kids at Woodbridge Elementary. I'm speaking tonight because there are some legal facts that I think the board needs to keep in mind when considering revisions to our policy on library materials. I also think they're facts that every parent in Carmel and throughout the rest of our state should know as well. There is a movement to apply the term harmful to minors to include the type of books that Moms for Liberty has repeatedly attempted to have banned from the Carmel High School library. Now, they would claim that the word banned is incorrect. They say it's just giving more control to parents who want their kids and that other parents who want their kids to read these books are still free to get them for them and give them to them. And that's not true. What they don't mention is that parents are not exempted from prosecution under Title 35, Article 49 of the Indiana Code. That is, under Indiana existing law, a parent is not allowed to provide materials that are legally defined as harmful to minors to their own child if that child is under the age of 18. Were this group to be successful in having the legal standard of harmful to minors applied to include books like All Boys Aren't Blue, a parent who provided a copy of such a book to their own child under the age of 18 would be guilty under law of a level six felony. That's punishable by a minimum of six and maximum of 30 months in prison and a fine of up to $10,000. That's not me hypothesizing, that's just the law as it's written. I would encourage anyone who doubts that to look it up for themselves or to contact their legislator and ask them about it. When a member of this board said during a discussion, I'm paraphrasing a bit, that the CHS library contains materials harmful to minors, but the district allows that because the stories might be helpful to some children. It doesn't matter if a statement like that is intentionally worded or just carelessly worded, but it's claiming that our high school is in violation of the law, and it's also accusing every Carmel parent who's let their kid read these books of committing a level six felony. And when we have speakers stand at this podium and claim that these books meet the definition of obscenity, they're also accusing Carmel parents of committing a level six felony. Thus far, this board as an entity has rejected legitimizing these attempts. As you consider changes to our book policy and future book challenges, I urge you to exercise the utmost care and caution in ensuring that you continue to do so. Thank you for all you do for our kids and our community.
Up next is Jeff Bolt. On deck is Christina Wheeler.
Good evening, folks. Jeff Bolt, my two kids, two daughters are proud graduates of Carmel Clay Schools, 2013 and 2020. So I'm also going to speak on your book policies, and I'm going to make it really simple off the top, with apologies to Mrs. Avery, my ninth grade English teacher. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Indiana Code requires multiple conditions all be met to decide if a book is objectionable or harmful, and it requires schools to formulate specific review policies, which you have done with Policy Number 5522. And these policies were just recently followed to the letter. A committee member recently objected to the book All Boys Are Blue being available in the high school. A committee was formed, the book was read, and the decision was made that the book did not meet the standards for exclusion. Petitioner then challenged this to the school board, and in a public meeting, each board member had a chance to express their views, and in a three to two vote, it was decided to keep Boys Are Blue in the library, and parents thus get to decide with their individual children about whether they should read the book or not. The process worked exactly as intended. When a community member or board member does not like the outcome, it does not mean you get to change the process until you get the outcome you want. That invites chaos. Your board will be constantly chasing its own tail. People will just decide that if they don't like a specific decision, they will demand changes, that person will demand a change, and on, and on, and on. That kind of chaos is not what our community either needs nor expects from our school board. So here is a simple question for this evening. If this vote had been reversed and the book in question had been removed, would this question be on your agenda this evening? And I suspect it would not be. That speaks not to a focus on policy, but a focus on politics, and that should not be the function of a nonpartisan school board. So ladies and gentlemen, it's simple. It ain't broke, so don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Christina Wheeler.
Thank you, board members. My name is Christina Wheeler. I'm the parent of one Carmel High School graduate and one freshman at Carmel High School. This discussion that has lingered on about our book review policy is really, in my opinion, a problem, a solution in search of a problem, for lack of a better word. It simply is not true that there is pornography in our schools, libraries, or in our curriculum books. It is not true. And by continuing this debate over the review policy, you let those who believe that untruth to continue to repeat that untrue position. These books that are under review are award-winning books that are parts of curriculums in schools across this country. They have been challenged many times, most of the time without being removed from schools. The reason why is what we're talking about here at its heart is a constitutional law issue. The Constitution and Americans in general do not like censorship. They don't like censorship of thought. They don't like censorship of books. They don't like censorship of ideas. And so the statute in Indiana, which is based on the U.S. Supreme Court's constitutional standard, is the appropriate standard as it exists in our country. When you remove books under a different standard or start expanding the review process to allow different types of challenges, what you do at the end of the day is you invite the school board and the school district to be sued. That's a horrible use of our taxpayer dollars. It's a waste of our valuable time, of our teachers and our staff. I encourage you to stick with the process that we have, which everyone has assured you is legally compliant, and that we not expand this and continue to drag out a process for what I honestly believe is an issue that very few in our community and very few parents think is a serious or important issue for us to be dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is appointments. At tonight's meeting, the board will appoint the Indiana School Boards Association delegate and the Indiana School Boards Association Legislative Liaison, Dr. Beresford.
Good evening. This time of the year, we appoint the Legislative Liaison position because it aligns with the legislative session that's coming up, a little bit different from all the other appointments that happened in January at our reorganization meeting. So each year, it's necessary for the board to appoint a board member to serve as an Indiana School Boards Association delegate and Legislative Liaison. At this meeting, the board will appoint a representative to serve from July 1st to June 30th term. The board recommends Mrs. Kristin Kokey to serve as Carmel Clay Schools Indiana School Boards Association delegate and Indiana School Boards Association Legislative Liaison from July 1st to June 30th of '25. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to appoint the Indiana School Boards Association delegate and Indiana School Boards Association Legislative Liaison?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Katie? I'm currently the Legislative Liaison and the ISBA Association delegate. I'm very excited to support Kristin in this role and a couple of reasons that I think that you would be great at this. Number one is as our board president, you are spokesperson for our board, so I feel like you have a really good track record of speaking on behalf of the board. I also think you're very involved in ISBA. I know that last year, we attended the conference where I served as a delegate, so you have great experience with that. I also feel like you have represented us as a board as a whole very well, making sure that you talk as a board member from a board member's perspective and as part of the board. And then my third thing is, this is a budget session, or my fourth thing, I can't count. This is a budget session, and as we know, our funding is very dependent on that, and I feel like you've shown that you have very thorough knowledge of our board budget and all the things that are that. So all that being said, I appreciate the fact that you are willing to take this on. As many of you know, I'm not running again, but I will obviously be here till December, so I'm very happy to discuss with you anything in that transitional period. And Dr. Beresford is amazing with that and having a very strong relationship with all of our representatives, so that's all.
Thank you. Louise?
Yeah, I also support you in this role, Kristin, because, you know, I always tout, maybe you don't know, that you're cool as a cucumber when it comes to things. So I think reporting on controversial topics won't be hard for you necessarily because you don't start with your personal perspective. And, you know, I'm grateful that you will be continuing on the board, and so don't know what changes will happen later in the year. I just know that I have four months, 13 days, and seven hours left, so I can't be in that position. So, no, I just made up that calculation. So, yeah, I just think in this very key role, it's very important that the president has really tight line of sight into what other boards are talking about, battling, and can communicate back with an unbiased perspective, so I think that will work. Did you have anything? Nope. Okay.
Greg?
Yeah, I wouldn't say anything contrary to what you both just said. Excuse me. But I, in conversations Katie and I had over the last year, have talked about finding a way for myself to get in this position. And the last time, last go-around, you had two board members in it, I believe, Jennifer and, am I right, Jennifer and Katie?
No, it was Leila and Jennifer because Leila was going off halfway through her term.
But there's precedent to having two board members on that. And I would like to propose that I be on there along with Kristin. I do have a passion for following what's going on, our local state legislation, and would like to get more involved in that. You're a president, so you do a lot more, you put a lot more time in than us. And, you know, the comment that the board recommends Kristin do this, I wasn't involved in that, so I'm not sure where that phrasing came, but like I said, I don't have a problem. I think Kristin's fully qualified to do it, and I'd just like to have us both do it so I get a chance to learn how to do it. And I'd just make that as a potential amendment. Not sure how we handle that with Robert's Rules of Orders, but I'd recommend that two of us be on there this term.
So the way that works, and Colleen is our parliamentary person, but you would need to make a motion, correct? And then there'd need to be a second, and then you would vote on that motion.
So, okay, a couple of questions. I've been on the board, this is my fourth year. I've, I think, only seen where we had two persons serving in this role only once, and the intent was to ensure there was a seamless transition when one of the members transitioned off, right? Okay. So, because that's what I would want to know more than, I have a passion for the topic. Greg, what else would, how else would it benefit the district to have two people in the role? Because what I see happening now is in other roles that we play, having the potential of having multiple people serve in roles where we typically just have one person. So what are the other benefits that would happen that are benefits for the district versus personal benefits?
We'd have two of us able to do it.
Like a backup, you mean? Like someone to back up the other person?
Or for future, you know, as we next year switch in. But I just, I thought it was interesting that, it's the discussions I had before, that I put in my name for being considered on this, and I have been talked to about it.
Can I stop you guys really quick? Greg, can you go ahead and make your motion if you were wanting to make a motion? And then we can have this discussion. Does that make sense, guys?
No. I want to hear why he thinks it's right. So, because right now, I'm trying to get an understanding.
You're following parliamentary procedures.
We can come back to this conversation, but we...
But we won't be able to come back to it if there's not a motion, right?
I see. Okay.
So I just want to know why.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that's why.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you for being open.
Go ahead, Greg. I apologize for interrupting.
Yes. Okay.
For the first motion. Okay, so what are we, are we going to vote at this time?
Right, because I can't second something I don't understand.
You were still discussing, answering her questions about what benefits you could bring to the district.
How benefits the district versus personal benefit, kind of thing.
Oh, well, I follow the Indiana Code development quite closely. Last session last year, actually, we had a House enacted act that came in place, and I brought that up to the board when we were having all the activities reviewed, all the bills that were brought up, and that one wasn't covered, and I mentioned that. So I have a passion for it, I watch it, I study it. I've noticed today that we've got a policy that needs to be updated. There was a law that went in earlier this year, and so I have an interest for it. I watch it, I'm a detail guy, and I've got time, so I thought I would be a good candidate for it. There was no discussion with me, and I find it interesting that the board has now been cited as recommending Kristin, and I just found out, you know, recently, like last day, you know, about this, by reading the agenda. So I would like, I had hoped to be it, that was the discussion, I felt there was some agreement that, yeah, we could move you into that and as maybe a way to compromise that maybe perhaps both of us do it. We work well together, I think we could both learn. Kristin's got a heavy load on her plate because she is the president, and I don't, so I have a little more time. So that's my recommendation as a compromise, that we would have a motion and that we'd put two on this time.
Thank you. Do you feel like this will be based on one of his points on easing the load on the president's side? Will this, you think, could it be helpful to you to have somebody support you?
I could not tell you that because I've never done the Legislative Liaison position, so I'm unsure.
I felt like it was slightly counterproductive. I don't think that Leila and I had an opportunity to cross-communicate very often, although we sat next to one another. We weren't on the same schedule, we weren't hearing the same information, we weren't going to the same meetings, so I can see where it would be beneficial for one person to hold both responsibilities so that there was a clear line of communication, just having served in that dual responsibility with another person.
Could you explain how that worked previously a little bit more when you were sharing the role?
Well, prior to Leila about to step off, I believe, from what, if I remember correctly, what Leila had said, it had always been a single person. But because she was stepping down, and if I'm misremembering, please let me know.
So she, I'm going to interrupt you. She was stepping down, and it was my first year as board president, and so she didn't, even though I had the most experience. And so instead of having me do it because I was taking on the challenge of being board president, we asked for someone else to be able to, and that's why you fit into that category, and so that she could mentor you for that first half of the year, and then you would be able to take it independently after. It was just because we were all so new in our respective positions. It was more of a training opportunity for Leila and then us to make sure that we set the district up for success.
What, is there, I'm trying to think of like norms and things. I mean, is there a way to have a funnel, sales terms? Is there a way to have someone on deck, there you go, HR terms, on the bench for next cycle? If Greg has, you know, said a couple times that he would like to be in this role, is there an opportunity, if we, you know, align that this opportunity is going to go to you this time as the president of the board, is there an opportunity for the next session to say Greg is the first considered?
I think one, I'm going to answer that just from my experience, is I think that one of the ways is to be involved in the ISBA, to attend the fall conference, to attend the spring meetings, the regional meetings, because the second part of this role is to be an ISBA delegate. So you really need to make sure that you're very involved with ISBA to understand because they present legislative priorities, and then we vote on them because we're part of the association, and then we bring those priorities back, and that's where we, it's a jumping ground for the things that we make as our own board legislative priority. It's a resource for us. So having that good experience with ISBA is helpful. So I think if you got involved and attended those different events and attended the different legislative sessions that they have, I think that that would be, to your point, a way to get more and more experience.
Let me, excuse me, let me comment to that, is I went to the fall conference last year, and I've attended pretty much every class that they've offered when I first got on the board.
Were you at the fall conference?
Yes, I was. I missed one, I missed one day that I was there.
Kristin and I weren't there, okay.
And so I guess my question to you, Katie, would be, what changed your mind? Because in the discussions you and I had, you said, well, maybe we can work you into that. I think at one point, you suggested doing a dual thing, but you figured, I was led to believe that you would, you know, lobby for me to be in that position, and if I just asked you, what changed?
I can very much answer that, but is this still on our first motion? I feel like we're getting, I agree.
Well, I make a motion that we put two of our board members on the, in this position. Is there a second?
So the motion is to just to put two board members?
Well, perhaps I'm confused. Are we going to make two different motions?
I would just be specific. I make a recommendation that we amend it, that Kristin and myself serve in this position, and then you can get a second. So just be specific that it would be, that you're proposing you and Kristin. Is that what you're proposing?
So before that motion, are you proposing, are we voting on the two of you would be in that, in that role?
No, no, I think she was trying to get you to be more specific, because if you just say two people, then we could say somebody else besides you. But if you were wanting yourself to be a second person, you probably should be specifically that you're amending it to be you and me.
Okay.
This is a totally separate motion. So this is like, like you would make a regular motion, like we typically do. So it has to be a specific motion, and then Kristin would ask for a second. And then if there's a second, then you have discussion and a vote for just this motion. And then if there's not a second, it dies on the table, then we still have to go back to the first motion to do the vote, because that one has a second.
The first one is still open. We're just putting...
So the first one's going to stay open?
Yes.
We're going to veer off and do a second motion and vote on it?
Yeah, we already motioned on the first one.
And then we still have to come back and vote?
Well, it's vote, it's a motion, and then it's a second. That's a requirement. And then if there's a second, then there's a vote on the newest motion.
Yeah, we did.
I did.
We had a motion as second on the first one.
Yeah, we did.
It was Jennifer and me.
Okay, so we're closing...
Yeah, we did.
So...
No, we're not closing the first one.
No, no, we're closing discussion on the first one, right? Because I'm trying to just get context, to make sure I'm making it informed.
We just need him to say, I want Greg and Kristin, and I put a motion.
If that's your motion. Yeah, it needs to be specific.
I can do that. I make a motion that both Kristin and I be in this role.
Okay. Do I have a second? What? Louise, what did you say?
I just said I don't have enough information to support that.
Okay, so then I will second it, and then we can discuss.
Okay.
So that you can get more information.
Okay.
I'm seconding Greg's motion. Louise?
It's mine. He asked me a question. Greg, the reason that my opinion changed is that I feel that you cannot represent the board in an unpartisan way. I feel that last year, you went and testified during, not this most recent session, but on the budget session, that you went and testified in budget hearings, and you didn't notify us that you were doing it, that we heard about it secondhand. I feel that, so that is something that for me was against our communication expectations and that you've worked with legislators. So for me personally, I know that you're very involved in local politics, and you represent sometimes yourself as a board member, not as a private... And you represent sometimes yourself as a board member, not as a private citizen. This is a very...
That's not true.
Okay.
But go ahead.
No, that's fine, I'm just giving you, you asked my opinion, this is my personal opinion. And so for me, I want to make sure for my own personal vote that the board is represented in a nonpartisan way that represents the board. So for that, my, and this is just my own personal opinion, I would rather have Kristen in this role and not you. That's, to answer your question. And you can, and you can disagree, and that's totally fine.
Yeah, and we like to do that.
I agree.
So, and actually, the, our discussion was after I had testified at a legislative committee. It was not on school budget. And when I testified, I testified as a citizen, and I made it clear that I'm the citizen representing the board. So I guess, are you saying you can't, you can't be a citizen and participate in local dialogues?
No, absolutely not.
And that would affect, okay, that's fine, that's your opinion.
I felt that you mentioned during your testimony that you were a school board member. And that, and you didn't notify any of us else that you, and it was a school-related matter. It wasn't like around about on the street that you lived in. It was in direct relation to something that was affecting public schools. That you went as a private citizen to testify on while you were a standing board member. So, and that's just my opinion. And that's all it is, my opinion.
But just let it be known too, that that happens right after the election. And I was testifying on a legislative bill that affected how school board elections are conducted. And you knew that well before you and I had the discussion about this legislative discussion. You and I had probably about six months later, so...
And that's fine, and my just opinion changed, and that's okay too.
Okay.
So...
Okay, thanks for that perspective.
Louise?
Either, you know, Katie or someone that's dealt with the board beyond the four years that I've been on it, have we had multiple people in this position more than that one time?
No.
No?
I don't, not, not in the eight years that I've been on the board.
Okay. And any other similar type of roles? Do we, have we had kind of two people in it when it, when it comes to a representation going out into the community or a government body representing the board?
No.
Okay. Because again, I'll go back to my original point. I get concerned that we're going to set a precedent where people can say, well, because I have interest, we should have two people in a position, and I don't know that I want to set that precedent. And that's, you know, I'm going to make that primary and secondary is, you know, I want people to be in positions that they're passionate about. But I just think creating a different norm where people can just say, well, I want to do it too. I don't know that that really works in a, I don't know if I call it a government body, a team, a leading body, a governing body. There you go, a governing body, I just, I don't know.
Where are team?
But, but if there is a way to say, okay, he's raised his hand twice, he says now, can we consider him or put him at the top of the list for next session? Because he's being pretty patient.
So that would be up to the board who votes at the next appointment. But I mean, he can definitely, yeah, he can definitely, like...
Note he has interest.
It is duly noted.
Thank you, that's, I think that's fair.
I agree, I think it's fair to note that the interest is there.
So we're going to, we have two things we're going to vote on here?
We need to, we need to vote on your motion first.
My motion, then we're going to come back?
And then we're going to go back to...
Will we have more, will we have more discussion when we go back?
No, this...
Because I have...
To the original motion?
If this one, you, we can, you can share anything that you want now on this emotion for you and Kristen to do it? And...
I'm done with that.
Okay, then we would take a vote, and if it passes, then we're done talking about the whole thing. If it doesn't pass, then we would talk back on Kristen taking the position.
But if he's, there's more he wants to say, then he should say it now.
So is there, yeah.
If there's more you want to say, it's a similar topic, I think you could just say it.
Well, not, not on the new motion, there's nothing else I have to add, but...
But it's a related motion.
Well, I would say this, I, you know, I'll let the parliamentarian guide us in how to handle it. I would put my name in the nomination to be in this position as it originally stood, instead of just Kristen, and we take a vote.
So that would be a third motion.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking.
We're getting matrix in here. So let's, we have to vote now on...
Let's vote on your, your motion that we have already been discussing. Any other discussion regarding Greg's motion? Okay, seeing none, we will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I am going to abstain from this vote, seeing as it involves, it involves me, I abstain.
If you would like Greg to do that, you can now make another motion for it just to be you.
By motion, then I'd be considered for the, an up for vote for the position.
Thank you, Greg, do I have a second? No second? And then, so then, motion, motion fails, okay. Now we go back to our original motion. Pardon?
It's on the original for Kristen. So there can be some more discussion if we want?
Yes, so we can continue the original discussion, should we so choose. If there is no further discussion, then we will take a vote. Okay, nothing further, all in favor signify by saying aye. I'm, any opposed? I'm going to abstain again. Motion carries.
And you abstained, is that right, Kristen?
Yes. Next on our agenda is consent. Tonight, the consent items include the personnel report, claims, and payroll. As a reminder, the consent in our meetings is that this time of the meeting where it is our business part of our meeting, really the reason why school boards have our meetings. So these are the items that tonight include a personnel report, claims, and payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Louise, oh, Jennifer.
I know.
You're earning your, you're earning your money tonight.
Uh, we, we can now take a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are going to move on to our action item, that is the bid award for the Cherry Tree Softball Complex. Mr. McMichael.
Okay, this bid is recommended for, it's for synthetic turf for the varsity field at the softball complex. And it's, the amount's 1,266,700. I'll elaborate a little bit because we received two bids. One met the specifications, the other one did not, as I noted in the report. And, and the one that did, did not meet the specifications is about 200 and some thousand dollars less money. So, so that's, it's not typical. Typically, they, you know, contractors do meet the specifications. And more often than not, it goes to the low bidder, as the legal term is the most responsible and responsive bidder. So in this case, the second bidder was not responsive. And that means they didn't comply with the specifications. So as you could imagine, our design team and Fanning and Howie in this case, they're quite aware of what the choices are that are out there. And, and there was, you know, discussion about those choices, as there always is with our staff, as we, you know, whether it's any, pretty much anything that we're building. And, and so the thought, the specifications were thoughtfully written. And the second bidder did not respond. And they gave, in the, in the, in the industry, it'd be a voluntary alternate. So there's a process for that to be considered as an approved equal. In this case, that didn't happen. The second product, the lower-priced product is not equivalent. We do not think that it would be also in our best interest. Sometimes I've had it before where we actually do decide or feel that maybe we should have considered that. In which case, I would be recommending that you would reject these bids because you can't really just choose the bidder that didn't meet the specifications. If you were the bidder that did, you'd want an opportunity to offer a lesser product as well. So you can see how that works. So in this case, we are recommending the bid. I would always prefer to have more than one bid that meets the requirements because then, then you know what the price, the best price you can get for that, on that day, based on what your needs are. But, but that's not available to us, and it wouldn't serve any useful purpose to kind of go through the process again. And so therefore, we are recommending award of this bid.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to approve the bid award for the Cherry Tree Softball Complex?
So moved.
Thank you, Louise, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie, any discussion? Katie?
Is this the same company that did the high school, do you know, off the top of your head?
I see a head shaking, yes, I thought it was, I wanted to be sure. And while I've got the mic, I'd note, this is about half of the project, so it's not the project. This is, we need, we want, we did the turf intentionally first to get it out there because it has a lead time. That, that, we wanted to get it ordered as soon as possible to stay on the schedule that we have.
Well, I'm glad to hear that it is the same company. I mean, that wouldn't have really changed my, my vote necessarily. But the Carmel High School Boys Baseball Stadium is incredibly beautiful.
And you're going to say the same thing about this.
And I am so excited, like, you know, for those, the girls softball players.
Yes, it is.
I'm, you guys, and this is on topic, but like, we have a great partnership with the Carmel Dads Club. And you guys were, you allowed them to play their championship baseball game on the high school field.
Right.
My son was lucky enough to be able to play in that. And it is, I mean, it was like they were in the big leagues. They were so excited, these little like middle schoolers who were out there, like on the Greyhound. I mean, it was like, you know, Reverend, like when they were in the, it was just beautiful. And so, A, thank you, I'm excited about the girls softball field. And B, thank you for that continued great partnership with Carmel.
You know, I didn't do it, now we've got, a lot of people involved here.
I know, well, please extend my thank yous to all the people for all the work that they do.
If I might add, we are, should go without saying, but we're, we are very sensitive about baseball being for boys typically, and softball typically being for girls. And aside from Title IX and some legal requirements for equity, regardless of that, we wouldn't, you know, violate the law, but, but we would provide, you know, equity for all of our athletes and all of our students really, regardless, so...
Thank you for saying that, appreciate it. No further questions from me.
Anybody else? Did you want to reiterate your question?
Yeah, just to note that it, it's in the agenda here, but it does say sufficient funds
Yep.
are available to support the bid, so it's, it's within expectations and budgets and all that.
Yes.
Thank you, we will now take a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the workshop topic, school safety. Mr. Woodward.
Colleen, can you broadcast me out? Okay, first of all, thanks for inviting me in to talk about safety. I get to do this annually, and I really appreciate it. Today, we're also going to talk about handbooks that will be changes in consideration for the board to approve. I hope we don't have to do any Roberts Rules discussions on that to have them considered. Okay, let's talk about our handbooks, changes to the handbooks. Elementary attendance per Indiana Code, we had to update a couple of things. Number one, parents will be notified of five unexcused absences, and that's K through six. Second, the prosecutor's office will be notified of 10 unexcused absences. And that is applicable for K through 12. Again, that is per Indiana Code. Second, personal electronic devices, this one got a lot of media play. So again, per Indiana Code, it must prohibit student use of devices during instructional time. The language that was already in our handbooks was actually already very similar to this. But we updated pretty much to match it nearly exactly, to make sure that, that it's very clear. Third, with elementary, we are restricting outside food delivery to students in our cafeteria. Believe it or not, students do DoorDash and Uber Eats. And so in the cafeteria, we have some students with some allergies. And so if, if anything like that does happen, that would have to be taken to the office. Third, early dismissal, and this isn't a requirement, but it urges parents to utilize the school dismissal manager. It simply makes it quicker and easier for both the parents and for the, the school to track when a student needs to be in that office for an appointment or something else. So those are the elementary updates. I'll move straight on to middle school. The attendance policy, again, per Indiana Code is updated. There is an addition here, habitual truant is defined for students who miss 10 unexcused absences. And the reason for that definition is it allows the school to restrict participation in extracurricular activities for a student who has more than 10 unexcused absences. Personal electronic devices, again, will be, be the same, we updated to match Indiana Code. Same with cafeteria, we will restrict outside food delivery to students who are in the cafeteria. And discipline code is updated to reflect the use of AI and plagiarism. And so we updated the middle school to match what the high school had already been doing. If you're using AI for an unfair advantage for a project. I'll go straight on to high school. Again, the attendance policy, habitual truant, again, defined so we can restrict extracurricular activities for a student who misses more than 10 unexcused absences. This one also adds a Saturday school as a possible consequence for accumulated tardies. Personal electronic device, language is again the same for code. There is a change to parking. Parking's an issue at our high school, I think everybody in this room knows that. And it increases the fine, which there already is a fine for students who park in unapproved areas. It increases it to $100, and it escalates per violation. There's also been a language added for timeline. If a student wants to remove their middle school grades from their college transcripts, that must be done prior to the end of August of their senior year. And that happens sometimes when a student has a grade that they received for high school credit in middle school that they don't want on their transcripts to be sent to a college or university. And so this gives us a prescribed time in which to remove that. Otherwise, they get those requests and they're sent on, and we get the request to remove them too late. Those are the updates on our handbooks this year for consideration. Any questions?
Quick question, you want to go first?
Jennifer?
Okay, mine is just quick. So what happens in the event of illness on the 10 days of absence? Like, you know, a really unfortunate illness?
Yep. Illness, if you have a doctor's note, it's excused. If you do not, they accumulate just like five, just like I have five personal days. You basically have five in which to take where you just call your student in.
Thank you.
And for the younger grades, tardy is not an issue? Is, it's solely if your, absence is if you are not there by, is it...
I'd have to look and see what...
Okay, 10 o'clock or 10:30, something like that?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can certainly look into that, yeah. Now, the, we know that for the prosecutor's office in the 10 days, they want them to be full days.
I'm just going to, can I go really quickly? I just, on Friday, went to the ISBA Summer Leadership Academy. And this is, this was one of the new policies, because the new law, correct me if I'm wrong with this, was on, they just changed the definition of the habitual truant, C was what was added?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And so one of the things they talked to us about is the definition, how the school defines excused absences. And so, I know you don't have that in front of you, are you able to kind of define a little bit of what excused are? Because that's really what the definition need, not the unexcused, but what is an excused?
Yeah, I couldn't probably go over the entire list, but we actually had a team of our middle school, actually, all of our assistant principals got together this spring because we wanted to define what's what. We also had so many codes that when an absence was entered, it was, there were just too many. We also had so many codes that when an absence was entered, it was, there were just too many. And so, we did go through that. Excused absences, illness with doctor's note, of course. There are high school kids who have internships and things with the state as well. Gosh, sent home from a nurse, of course, is excused for 24 hours based on fever. Oh, man, I could go on. We have almost 30 different absentee.
Yeah, I'm mostly asking because I have, I feel the same way. And when you have a young child in elementary school, they get a lot of viruses. And for those of us who have high deductible insurance plans, it is expensive. You know, $200, $300 just to go to the doctor for the doctor to say your child has a virus. I'm just putting that out there. I'm not saying for you to give me a solution. I think that's something in the future I would love the school to look at, to see how we can help families out.
I think with, just speaking off the top of my head, you know, we have five where we have to send a letter and we have that conversation, and our buildings are really good with that. Ultimately, we have 10 before we have to send a notification. If we have 10, we have to be, we need to be talking about what medical issues we're dealing with. And then, it's kind of a slippery slope. Also, when I talk about we have to send that notification to the prosecutor's office, so that's by law, but it doesn't mean they have to necessarily act on it. And so, anything that they receive from us, they would follow up with us, like, what's going on with this student?
Thank you.
It gets to be a slippery slope, however, because, you know, you may have a student who's missed 20-plus days of school and a parent may say, well, they're sick, but we have no medical documentation. Then, we have to deal with, you know, is this educational neglect or is the kid really sick and what can we do to help?
And I know some of the school nurses say, bring your child on in, bring your student in, and I'll check their temperature and if they're still sick and have, you know, then you can go home. So, I don't know if that's across the district, though, but that's, you know, just trying to make sure that there's not a burden on our families.
Yes, correct. I agree.
Greg?
Yeah, just a question on the AI is plagiarism is, I understand that things always get more sophisticated, you know, technology, of course, so it's always a catch-up game. But I understand that you could tell AI to write like an essay as a seventh grader or whatever, you can kind of tell it to, you know, follow where your skill level might be. How do we intend to, or what tools do we have to determine if something is written by AI or not? Or how do we notice when you got a paper in if it is AI?
Yeah. Honestly, I don't have the qualifications to tell you that. I don't know that we even have such a tool. But I think what we do have is sometimes a student can explain that about another student, having done it. I think our technology people could probably come in here and give you a really good overview of AI and tracking that. I certainly couldn't.
Dr. Dudley?
So, some of the pieces that we have with our AI is when we, when you think about the writing process and you think about knowing how your students write, it's, you don't just turn in a final product. You turn in multiple drafts of that product and the teacher is working with the student. So then, if you all of a sudden do an AI, you know, write this as a seventh grader and it is completely different than the way the student has been writing, they can determine that, yes, this has been AI-generated. At the high school, we do have a tool called turnitin.com. And as the AI gets more sophisticated, so does the detection of AI get more sophisticated. And so, that, that's almost a race as that detection does get more sophisticated to determine that this is a probability that it could have been generated through AI. So that, we continue with that piece. But the bigger piece is really knowing the student and knowing the student as a writer and working through that writing piece, because the teachers can detect that when it is something completely different. Just like if another student had written their work, they can tell that it's not that student's work.
It's a topic, I think we've talked about having this as a board agenda item or workshop, the whole arena of AI. Perhaps we could do that sometime in the near future. Not just this angle of it, but, you know, how can it be used in part of the preparation process?
We had someone in our office actually did a training for us on AI and it was probably the most beneficial training that I've had in a couple of years. It's really fascinating what you can plug in and the assistance it can give you. It's really amazing.
Yeah, I remember us saying we would like to learn more about what we were going to do. So, can you track this, Kristin, that we'd like to learn more about AI in schools? Because one of the things I was thinking about is how does how we're handling it align with universities that students will soon ascend to? Yeah, I'd like to know if we're preparing them to transition in a strong way so that they're competitive when they go in versus just trying to avoid it kind of thing, so, yeah.
Okay. And Katie had, Katie had something to say as well.
Well, I just like that on the AI point, that it talks about for an unfair advantage. AI is amazing in so many ways. I think that there's so many ways that we can teach our kids about technology. And I'm sure that, you know, my parents, when they put in the AOL CD and we got DialUp for the first time, you know, they're like freaking out, what's happening to the world, you know? So, I think that we have to be aware of it, we have to adapt and do all those different things so that we can prepare kids. My husband is actually an AI app developer. So, I mean, he's spending his days and paying my mortgage by using this amazing technology. And so, I think that we can invest in our kids and stem different types of things to use it for the positive and not for trying to cheat on your book report. So, I like that there's that distinction in the handbook, that it's for the unfair advantage part. The second thing is I just want to piggyback on what Kristin said. And I know this is how you meant it, but don't send your kids to school sick just so that they get excused absence. Keep them off the school bus. But I know this is something too, ISBA and legislative, this is a concern that we had, to your point, that it does, it can affect lower income families very significantly if they have to have a doctor's note. I appreciate our school secretaries and all the things that they do to communicate with our parents and everything's. I'm personally not a huge fan of this, but I think it's something that will continue to evolve and to adapt. And I appreciate you guys being so on top of it by meeting for those exceptions.
Other questions on handbooks? Thank you. All right, let's step into school safety. So, school safety initiatives we're going to talk about tonight are things that we've implemented based on our strategic plan and national and state best practices. Here are the guiding principles of our strategic plan. I don't need to emphasize the importance of safety, of course. But if you'll notice, a safe, non-threatening learning environment is essential. That's part of our strategic plan, that's part of our guide here. And really, I think about it always in a continuum. So, providing a safe learning environment, it spans a continuum. And that goes from where a student with special needs has access to resources that they may need or another student who doesn't feel welcome is made to feel welcome or a student who may have some serious mental health issues also has access or we eliminate the barriers for those. And that can be part of school safety, but then it goes all the way to having an SRO in all of our buildings and locked doors and checking access and all of those things. So, it is a continuum. We have key measures for our strategic plan. They're outlined here, monthly drill tracking, which we do, staff and student training cycles, which we're going to talk quite a bit about today, implementation of a full-time SRO in every school, contracted mental health services, which I believe Brooke Lawson, our director of mental health, was in here a month or two ago, and a stop at anonymous tip line data output. I'm going to show you all of those measures today. The preparedness cycle is basically, we plan, we equip, we train, and we practice it, and then we go back and do it again. We're always getting better. And that's one of the things Dr. B has always said, be the best at getting better. And so, we push that quite a bit. We, I have a guiding philosophy and this is the sixth year in a row that you're going to hear it from me and I'll pound it until I leave this position, a well-trained staff and student body. That's the key to school safety. And I believe that and that's what guides us. Now, we have updates of our emergency preparedness plans and I'm not going to share those here in a public forum. They are exempt from public disclosure. You know, sharing of our safety plans compromises the safety of all of our kids. However, I'm going to talk mile-high view of a couple of the things that we do. Specifically with training, we train all of our staff members. Every custodian, every bus driver, our subs are getting this training now. From top to bottom, our teachers get the training, our students get the training. There's nothing better than eyes and open communication and a well-trained staff and student body. That's the absolute key to school safety. You can throw tech gadgets at me all day and they don't work as well as training. We also empower our staff. Our staff, we want them to be the ones who call lockdowns. At no point ever is a principal sitting at their desk waiting to call a lockdown or to handle a fire drill. They're out and about. All of our staff get that training. Seconds matter and seconds save lives and that's why everyone is empowered in our schools. We do the layers and layers of this and that is, again, we train and we train. And Dr. Beresford uses this phrase as well and it's something I've believed in my whole career, drip, drip, drip philosophy. You don't train someone at the beginning of the school year and then wipe your hands and you're done. That doesn't work. You have to train them and then you have to exercise it and then you have to retrain them. And we do it in small bits because we want them to always be thinking about it, understanding it. And frankly, what you want to create is a culture of school safety. Whereas, I had a, one of our special services staff stopped in a classroom on Tuesday of this week, Tuesday, just a few days into school, and the students in there said, you're not supposed to be in here. We don't see your ID badge. And it was underneath her jacket and she showed it. That's what we want. That's the type of culture we want, our students and our staff. I want to pair that, you know, we talk about seconds matter. We have, with help from Carmel Police Department in Hamilton County, we have radios that tap into every one of our SROs instantly. And so, we can actually shave minutes off of a typical 911 call because if you call 911, you go through a script. And we are, and before they send anyone your way, we can actually have someone responding instantly based on that radio communication. It's pretty unique and it's something we're pretty proud of. When I started this job just six years ago now, I met with every principal, every safety specialist and all of our SROs at the time. And I asked them, what are our issues? What are our five most concerning issues? And so, they listed all of those and we hit them all. Now, there's a couple that weren't practical. You know, we want key fobs on every single door all throughout the school corporation. I mean, you're talking about a $100 million project, right? Not always practical. But with low-cost, practical means, we hit every concern that they issued. And the biggest one, frankly, was reunification. And so, I want to talk about reunification with the group today and kind of make that the focus of our talk. So, what is reunification? It's basically taking all of the students from point A and getting them to point B and releasing back to parents and doing that all in a very safe manner. Why would we have to do that? Well, chemical spill, gas leak, violence, crisis we've not even thought of yet. There may be a moment we need to move kids. We did this two years ago now at Mohawk Trails. Someone smelled gas in the building. And they immediately called. We had law enforcement there, we had fire department there. And they said, until we figure this out, we've got to go. So, we moved everyone from Mohawk Trails to another location. We matched every student with their parent, having them check in specifically in about an hour and a half. We're talking 500 kids from the minute we had to leave that school to the minute every kid was gone. And we're proud of that. And I'm going to kind of walk you through what we do here. So, why are we doing it? Well, police on the crime scene. Firemen are responsible for the accidents, but the kids, they belong to us. So, when we get them back to their parents, that's on us. So, we can't just assume someone's going to swoop in and take care of this. So, we have specific reunification areas and locations and those locations are in our safety plan and will remain exempt from public disclosure. Because again, if we were reunifying and we had to go somewhere, the place would be swarmed with parents before we got a single bus there. So, the minute we get our kids there, we'll push that information out so we won't preannounce those. And the process itself isn't something we made up. There is a school corporation out in Colorado, just outside Denver, that has done over a dozen reunifications. And so, they've kind of perfected a process that has been adopted, not completely nationwide, but a couple of states have mandated it as the process. We adopted it here because I see it as best practice. If we have a situation like this, I also want to emphasize, it wouldn't just be us. So, if we have a situation where we have to take an entire school of kids and go, our law enforcement will likely be dealing with the situation. So, our partners from Fishers and Noblesville and Westfield and state police will all be there, as well as their school officials. So, we've all trained together. I know where their locations are, they know where mine are, we go to each other's drills. We'll have all hands on deck from a countywide perspective. So, we go back. The process we use is called the standard reunification method. It's from the I Love You Guys Foundation. Now, this is a site, this is not our site. But just to point out, our students will enter one side of this, we'll have a bus drop-off. We can get our buses out into schools. We think we can get them almost all out in 20 minutes. So, when we have a crisis, we can get our people up and going. We'll have them delivered. The key to this is going to be communication. Emily Bauer, who's here in the room, has pre-made notifications that she can kick out. We have access to these locations. We'll get the students in, notify parents while we're en route. Our parents will enter one side and students will be in the other. Line of sight is key because you can't have students running to mom and having that hug moment and then gone before we know who they're gone with. We have to track that student from point A to point B because then another parent's going to roll in and we're not going to know where that kid is. So, we have to be confident there. I want to pass these out. So, if there's a crisis in one of our schools, they have a walking site. They also have an off-site location where we'd have to bus. If we have to bus our students to a location, the people in this building will take it over. Because if it's that type of a crisis, the people in the building are going to be dealing with that crisis, A, either there, or they're also going to be dealing with upset kids and upset staff. And we can't expect them to run the reunification. So, we will take that over in this building. We have Chromebooks that are downloaded with every student's Power School information. So, if we need to check who can pick this kid up and who cannot, we have that ability. We can do, even do it if the power is out. The typical Chromebook, they think will run about eight hours, which is more than enough time for us to get all of our students reunified. So, it's updated every single month, so it's about as current as it can get. We'll have a check-in site there. We'll have greeters who will meet every parent as they come up and they will give them this card and a golf pencil. Don't use pens, pens dry up. So, we have golf pencils that are available to go out with these cards. So, it gives people a means to document their information. Then, we will move the parents in, we'll check everybody in, we'll rip this card in half. You see the perforation on there. Someone will take the one piece of that card, go get the kid. A parent will hold the other piece, we'll loop them back together and out they'll go. So, it's going to be almost like a circle. Parents will check in, someone will go get the student and they will circle back out with that student. Almost call it a student coat check system, you know, we've all checked our coats somewhere. That's pretty much what we'll do. So, have we tested it? Yes. We were able to drill it a couple of years ago. And then, we had our actual event at Mohawk that went, boy, better than expected. And then, we drilled it again just a couple of months ago. And here are a couple of pictures from that day. Now, you don't disrupt a whole school day with something like this, right? So, what we did is we picked an athletic team who had just finished their season, the middle school baseball team finished their season. They have their final celebration. So, their final celebration was at this off-site location. We had pizzas for them, so it was non-traumatic for them. They're just there, they take a bus there, they have their. They're just there, they take a, a bus there, they have their, their celebration with the team and their coach, uh, who's a former SRO. And uh, then all the parents, we've met with them in advance, so again, no trauma, no surprises. Walked through the process with them, they get a, a call from school messenger, they come out in real time and uh, we reunify them with their student. Small sample size, but the, the key is really to train us, not to traumatize anyone else or put anyone else out, it's to train us. And so um, this process again, went pretty well. So something to expect, uh, if we have another reunification, uh, heavy, heavy uh, law enforcement response. If it's an actual event, law enforcement are going to come and they're going to come fast and uh, and, and many plentiful. Um, there will be traffic restrictions. Uh, our partners at Carmel Police Department, uh, who are masters at, at guiding uh, large numbers of people in and out of a place, um, have areas that they'll be able to put people to move traffic. The other thing I'll ask for is patience. Uh, we have a process, it will work, um, but give us a few minutes to get it going. That's the, the key. The other thing is notifications. Our promise to you, the, our public and the parents, is that we get this information out to you as soon as we can and then we continue to update you throughout this process. That needs to be a key as well. Communication's got to be open. Again, back to uh, to other topics in, with school safety, we have school safety specialists uh, throughout all of our buildings. We have 30 certified school safety specialists here. That's people who've finished five days of training through Department of Education. Two of those are sitting up here at the DIAS, our superintendent and assistant superintendent, uh, have both been certified as school safety specialist. We have monthly meetings where uh, as a team, we're all working through problems. So what one school may have dealt with that month, I want them to come and share it with all of the schools. What worked, what didn't. Because if it happens at your building, it's going to happen with us. We have stop the bleed kits, again, thanks to the Carmel Fire Department. Uh, we have them in every classroom, we have them in every AED location, we have them on every school bus in Carmel Clay Schools. We know it saves lives. Uh, I think this is my presentation here last year or the year before where I showed a principal who had saved the life of a construction worker by having a stop the bleed kit and the training. We are expanding our AED locations to include uh, more athletic fields. We have the uh, the Greyhound Activity Center coming along. We want to make sure that you can get to an AED and then have the training to utilize it uh, as quick as you absolutely need to. We also uh, have participated in Narcan training with the Hamilton County Health Department and we have Narcan in our schools. Um, now, we didn't do this because there's a trend of, of opioid use amongst our students. Um, we did this because in Hamilton County, uh, opioids are an issue. And if we have a, a, an issue, I'm, we will have an issue and it will be on our premises, but likely not in our schools. It will likely be someone in a parking lot or at an after-hours activity and our people are ready for that. We have a phrase, Carmel Clay Schools, "Safety is important to us." And we want all of our staff to know it and we hit it with all of our trainings. Safety is important to us, that's why I'm not holding this door for you. Safety is important to us, that's why we don't prop doors. Safety is important to us, that's why I'm asking questions that may uh, seem off-putting, um, but we want to do it as kind as we can, but safety is important to us, we're going to ask the questions and we're going to follow the protocols. We don't prop doors, we report suspicious behavior. If I'm in a building, and I, I showed a video last year actually where I had someone um, actually walk through a building without an ID on to see how fast someone would, would get them. We do those things and we reward those people who respond appropriately. Another one of our um, strategic uh, measures, a key measure, is uh, our anonymous reporting system. You will see here that uh, last year, there were 3,400 activations of the Stop It app. That's not carryover from the last year, the year before, that's new activations. My guess is, uh, and Adam, you've been throwing a number at me if you want, my guess is we have 12,000 plus students right now who uh, are, are on or have logged on to Stop It over the last couple of years. So not only do we have the activations, last year we had 1,174 reports on there. Now, that's a lot of late night phone calls between myself and Lieutenant Miller and his wife, I know has a nickname for me that's probably not appropriate. Um, but it's monitored 24 hours a day. And so um, part of this process, uh, if, if it is a life-threatening report and that's suicide, uh, self-harm or harm to others, we actually get a phone call and then we deal with it uh, when we need to deal with it, which is immediate. Otherwise, they're dealt with at the building level uh, through the school day, but 1,100 times. And uh, I've told the story in here before, but I know there are students who are alive because of threats to their own uh, self-harm because of this program. I want to touch briefly on vaping. Uh, vaping is popular in the United States because let's face it, vapes are marketed to kids with the flavors and the availability, um, the packaging. And so our schools are a reflection of our communities and so with vaping out there, we had to prepare ourselves for this. We have vape detectors that have been installed in all of our secondary schools, the three middle schools and the high school. We also received from funding uh, for these from the Jewel lawsuit that we participated in um, just last year. And the key to this, uh, I mean, we just want our kids healthy. Like that's it. And so if uh, we are getting activations of vaping in certain areas, uh, if there's uh, a, a student uh, that we can track this to, we're going to, to work with that student. And if there's a group of students there, then we need to update our supervision. And so if there are certain hotspots in our buildings, um, where vape detectors going off, that's where we need to increase supervision uh, to prevent this and help our kids. I'm really interested by this time next year to bring vape data back to you and tell you what uh, what the results are from this, just how many we have. And we also have a Parent Resource Center that's available. Small, between 30 seconds and three-minute uh, videos to educate parents and the community on a variety of topics. We also this last year had a um, a digital safety night that was hosted by the Carmel Ed Foundation and um, Brooke Lawson uh, from our mental health, she's our mental health director, uh, Kate, Kate Masterson with IT, um, Greg Zimmerman, one of our SROs participated. Uh, we had really, really good attendance with this. You know, your, your after-school um, uh, events for parents had kind of, we hadn't had good attendance for quite a while. We did for this one. And so we're hoping to replicate and build off of that uh, this year because again, a well-trained staff and student body and community. So that's what we're pushing. Now, like another key measure of our uh, strategic plan is to have an SRO in every one of our school buildings. And I can tell you this, um, there is no greater resource with regards to school safety than a well-trained school resource officer. And uh, I want to point out that these are not, um, uh, these are, what's the phrase, Lieutenant? Carefully selected, well-trained, specifically trained, properly equipped law enforcement. Oh, sorry. These are uh, these are the best of the best with Carmel Police Department and it's a special unit. And everyone, please give a hand to, to Lieutenant Miller and our new SRO.
Good evening and thanks for having us again. Uh, I know the board, you saw last year's presentation, so this year will be a little shorter, uh, a little bit different information, but I definitely have to start with one major thing and that's how this could not happen without the citizens of Carmel passing that school safety referendum, referendum. Having the board we have, the police department, the partnership between the city of Carmel and Carmel Clay Schools is second to none. Uh, we, we talked to a lot of agencies throughout the state at our conferences, we talked nationally to a lot of groups. Very few SRO programs have what we have. And that is a testament to our citizens at the board and our department, everybody working so well together because we care about the kids and we care about making this and keeping this a safe community and well-prepared. So I, I want to show this picture here, um, just to give you an idea of the size. Because of the referendum, uh, for two years now, we've got an SRO in every school. We have four at the high school. Uh, we have two sergeants that help supervise those 18 and then I'm the lieutenant, I'm over all 20 of them. That's a large task. Uh, if you look at other agencies around us, unparalleled. They don't have this type of coverage the way we do here in Carmel. We take that very special. On top of that, like you said, we, we are, Carmel PD is the same philosophy, best at getting better. We've achieved some, achieved some greatness, but we're never satisfied with that. What can we do better? What can we do better? We're always pushing ourselves. Part of that with this unit is everybody who's in our unit, it's especially, it's a premier unit in our department. You have to apply to it. Uh, you have to have at least two years on a department before you even apply, you go through an interview process. And just because you may be a good SRO, doesn't mean you get selected. If you talk to a lot of our SROs, I've had to say, it's not a no, it's a not yet. Because we work so hard to get the right SRO with the right school. If we don't get those personalities matched up just right, we're setting ourselves up for failure. You're not going to get the experience you need, the kids need. Uh, they're, they're a part of the fabric of the school district and part of these schools. So there's a lot that goes into it, that not just trying to find the right people. Because we get these highly motivated officers, they tend to get promoted, some of them have left for federal agencies, so I have to replace these SROs. I'm very proud to say, and in talking with other, other agencies, they can understand how we have what we call people on the bench ready to go. Every time we open up a, a, a process for new SROs, we have multiple applicants. We don't take everybody. So everybody we, you've seen this picture, you're going to meet a couple of our new ones tonight. Everyone is very specifically chosen. They go through about 100 hours of training specific to working as a school resource officer. We are not just cops in schools. A lot of uh, municipalities will take their cops and put them in schools. Well, the problem there, if you don't give them that special training, if you don't select them properly and specifically, you're going to get cops in schools. And they end up on social media with some very bad videos. We don't have that here. All of our SROs are trained in crisis intervention. We go through 40 hours of training at a basic SRO school. Many of our SROs have gone through advanced SRO training because of the uh, the dedication of the school district. We go to the state conference, the national conference every year. There's another 60 hours of training we get annually. The, the amount of training we do in Carmel is amazing, but that's how you're going to get the highly skilled SROs that we have. So thank you very much to the citizens, thank you to the board and thank you to our leadership. I would like to introduce two of our newest SROs since we met last year. There's actually three. The third one, his wife's birthday is tonight, so I want to keep the marriage happy, he could not be here tonight. Uh, that's James Morris at Carmel Elementary. If I want to share our other, other two SROs real quick.
Hello, everyone. I'm Officer Anna Boskis. I am the newest SRO at Clay Middle School. Um, so I was born in East Chicago, Indiana and found my way here in the wonderful city of Carmel. Um, I'm going to keep it pretty simple. The reason I'm an SRO today is because I didn't get a mentor, role model, and just someone to look up to when I was young, um, growing up where I did. So I want to give back and this is my way of giving back to our community. I love this community. Um, so I'm very excited for this new school year and being in this new position.
It's going to be tough to follow that. Oh my gosh. Anyways, I'm, I'm John Fike. Um, I've been on Carmel Police Department for about three years now. Um, I've loved every minute of it, but something that I always wanted to do is be an SRO. Uh, growing up, I had, I was lucky enough to have an SRO in high school. Um, he was a part-time officer, uh, so he worked the road and he was also an SRO. So that's how I got my interest in being in law enforcement and an SRO at the same time. And so that just kind of speaks to my point of why I wanted to become an SRO is just to give kids an opportunity to have someone to look up to, um, because I was fortunate enough to have someone like that. So I just want to repay the kids and give them a chance. So thank you.
I want to play a short video. Uh, Channel 6 News last year did a, a little spot on the unit. We've, we've pared it down. It was, it was actually quite lengthy for a TV spot, uh, so I was very happy with that, but I'm going to share a little bit of that with you tonight.
From active shooter training to improving firearm skills and working on defensive tactics, the training for school resource officers at Carmel Clay Schools is extensive. Tonight, I'm introducing you to the lieutenant who runs the unit as his team prepares to welcome back thousands of students and staff members for their first day of school on Monday.
Working in the schools is very different than working on the street.
Lieutenant Adam Miller has been a Carmel police officer for more than 28 years. For the last two, he's been in charge of the school resource officer program at Carmel Clay Schools.
Really, the majority of what we do is mentoring, building relationships with these kids i- is paramount.
There are 21 school resource officers in the unit that go through more than 100 hours of specialized training. One officer is assigned to each elementary school, middle school, and four at the high school.
Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, there's been some horrific school shootings. We spend a lot of time studying those and trying to learn from what happened in those districts to make sure we don't run into the same problems here in Carmel.
The summer is a busy time for Lieutenant Miller and his team from conferences and trainings to youth academies.
We're connecting with our community in a time of non-conflict. They get to know us, we get to know them, and it really forms a great bond in the city of Carmel.
Every summer, the entire Carmel Police Department goes through active threat training.
So each year, we try to tailor those scenarios to replicate what we're finding going on around the country so we can try to prepare for that.
David Woodward, the district's director of student services, took part in the training.
By participating in active shooter training, we identified a need to actually create better interior signage for our schools. Uh, so a responding officer can actually show up and if we say we have an issue in room 201, they're not looking around to figure out where room 201 is. We have pretty clear directional signage.
You heard the SROs talk about mentoring. This is the triad approach we take. NASRO, our national board, has come up with this triad approach. And this is really the guiding philosophy of all of the SROs. If you look at the base of it, educator and informal counselor. Our job is to build those relationships with the kids, with the parents. And, and keep in mind, we're not student resource officers, we're school resource officers. That's the parents, actually citizens, even if you don't have kids in the schools, the board, everybody, we're a resource for everybody associated with the schools. Educator, we get into the classrooms. The best way to connect with these kids is in the classroom. The teachers love it. A lot of our SROs have some life experience that translates to the classroom. So it's great for the teacher to have somebody come in and say, here's why you need to pay attention because this, this is how we use this in real life. It's, but it's a great time for us to bond with them, they get to ask questions and get to know us as people, not just somebody in uniform. Uh, we get this a lot when we work out, well, first of all, sometimes we're not in uniform out in public and to have kids come up and, and say hi to us or sometimes grab a leg and give somebody a hug, the, there is a shock to look on the parents' faces at first and we have to remind them, we're their SRO, they know us from school. And the parents relax and it's good, but to have kids do that i- is very, very special. At the top of the triad, we're obviously law enforcement officers, that we wear the uniforms, we're about safety, but so much of what we do law enforcement-wise is behind the scenes, safety planning, drills. Contrary to what a lot of people across the country may claim, we are not there to arrest kids. In fact, when you're under 18, our goal is to help kids make better decisions. They're going to make mistakes, they do get in trouble. Our job is to come in and not arrest them, but mentor them, build them back up so they can be healthy, productive adults, future citizens of our community to give back. You can bounce back from all those mistakes when you're a kid, so that's what our focus is, is to really mentor them back to a great place. Safety-wise, like Mr. Woodward said, we can't go into all the specifics of our safety plans. That's what keeps us safe. Um, Alice is one of the things we do teach. Alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. Those are concepts of, if there's an event, we don't say active shooter because that's just one instance. There's a lot of things that could be a threat to the school, the students and the staff. So we train them to think bigger. They may be in the, in the mall someplace, in a theater, these same concepts can be used out in public, not just the schools. So it's K through life education we're trying to give these kids. And even the elementary kids, it's amazing to watch. I've been in a drill before where it was very chaotic, the kids were directed to substitute teacher exactly where to go and how to do it. We're talking about third graders. So don't ever underestimate how smart and, and skilled these kids are. They do phenomenal work, they're very calm, usually they're calmer than the adults. But we teach these concepts and we invest heavily in the human element of our staff, knowing what to do. Technology is great, we get solicited all the time with some really cool gadgets, but my problem with those is if the human behind it isn't doing their job, that technology just fails. So we do invest heavily in the drills and training and we So we do invest heavily in the drills and training, and we don't just do drills to check them off. Yep, we did that drill this month, move on to the next month. When we go visit these schools, the supervisors, myself, we have other SROs come in to help critique. We have officers off the street come in to get familiar with the schools. Just like the classroom, these educators understand that. What's the lesson? What are we trying to get out of this drill? Maybe it's a fire drill, maybe it's a lockdown drill. There has to be a learning objective to that drill. This is something we've tried to institute over the last couple of years. It's gone from a check-in-the-box drill to let's learn something from this drill, so we can apply it to another situation. We had a lockdown called in one of our schools a couple of years ago. There was no active shooter. There was no real threat far as the student body. It was a matter of 1,400 kids were in the hallways, and we needed, that staff member knew, we needed to get 1,400 kids to safety, so we could get to the one child that needed the attention. Worked perfectly. We'd never drilled it that way, but because we've taught them how to think during these drills, they reacted properly. Everybody was safe, and it was a very good learning tool that we still use today to teach our staffs in other schools. Hey, this is how we can use these principles into a way we've never thought about. We had a parent safety academy this last year, very well-attended, great comments, ideas. They opened our eyes, we opened their eyes, really facilitated some good discussion. We also have a, I'm gonna give a little plug for the Carmel Police Department, we have a citizens academy, and one of the nights is the SROs. So I spend about two and a half hours with the public and teach them about what we do as well. Again, great, we're getting input from the citizens, we're able to educate them as well. I've actually come up with a very good training opportunity in a couple of weeks. I'm going out to Baltimore, Maryland. One of our parents is retired FBI, worked with the Behavioral Analysis Unit, and put me in touch with them, and they're holding a symposium on behavior threat assessment. So I'm gonna spend a week with the FBI and a couple of weeks on Baltimore, and bring some of that knowledge back, and hopefully enhance what we do for behavior threat assessment.
Can we hear it for Lieutenant Miller and the new officers again? So, we know we've got more to do. I'll tell you, one of the things about the parent safety academy that I love is we actually give all of the parents a form, and we want them to fill it out and tell us, what are some gaps that you might have? And I don't want them to tell everyone, right? Because again, that compromises safety, but I want them to tell me. And I'll make the same offer here. Anyone who's watching or anyone here, if you see gaps in our schools, tell me. Because we don't know what we don't know, but we're always looking to get better. And that's our commitment. So, any questions for me regarding safety?
Louise?
Okay. Let's see. Thank you for that great, detailed presentation. I really appreciate every time we have them. Some of my questions that I have are, and it's okay if you don't know, but I'd love to know more. So counselors, what do we do to wrap our arms around students who are bullied or students who are loners? Because a lot of times when unfortunate shootings like this happen, it's someone who was very much alone or someone who was victimized. What do we do to just kinda help that class of students?
Yeah, so we could literally do hours on exactly that. First is identification. The Stop It has helped quite a bit. If a student feels bullied themselves, or if someone else thinks there's bullying, and there's other means to report it. Frankly, Stop It's anonymous. We can communicate through it, but the best thing is if we make connections with them. And there's nothing better than that direct connection with your kid or with another kid who will report something to us. Then with regards to what our social workers and counselors do, I mean, they could go forever about groups that they run, and the kids who come in and have lunch with them every day, and how they try and teach them social skills. Sometimes, frankly, it's even helping them learn some hygiene skills and just get those kids ready and get them connected. I mean, that's the key. I mean, really, honestly, if we're talking school safety, your kids have to love it, and they have to love each other, and they have to love the building, and when you get there, the rest of this is icing. But that's the key, connecting with kids.
That warms my heart, like, helping students feel more connected. I saw you had the Catch My Breath prevention program, which is phenomenal. Does that have any element of treatment? Because what I've learned is there are not a lot of treatment programs for students under the age of 18, which is super frustrating with this epidemic of Juul and, you know, these electronic cigarettes.
Yep. So Catch My Breath is very specific to prevention. With regards to treatment, there are some resources that they put out there for kids, but I can tell you that Brooke Lawson, our mental health director, has connected us, and in fact, some through grant money, to provide, it's called Prime for Life. And it's a local treatment where students who are using vapes, there's actually two levels of this. There's kids who have experimented, and then there are kids who have a serious problem, and they can be identified. So that's something that we've been able to actually get access to. It's, I'll tell you, a year, just over a year ago, I didn't even know it existed. And so it's been a real great resource.
Wonderful. Okay. And then my last few comments are more geared toward the officer, so I need you to pass a thank you to the female officer who knocked on my door at 11:30 at night to deliver my son's wallet that we didn't know was lost. Now, it did scare the crap out of us, because officer's knocking is not a very friendly knock at 11:30 at night. But we were really grateful that somebody found his wallet he lost when he was riding his bike. So, thank you. Do we have any community self-defense classes or, you know, classes that we offer for, like the, I'm thinking the high school level? That would be really interesting.
So we've had that question before. The Carmel Police Department does not sponsor that type of training. However, there are groups within the community that do self-defense classes. So if we need that, I usually reach out to our training team. They know people in the community that do that outside of our jobs. So yeah, when people look for it, we put them in touch with those resources.
Okay. Final one, thank you for helping me find my lost son during the Carmel graduation.
Katie?
I just wanna echo all the accolades and everything. The, our, David, the work that you have done, and Lieutenant Miller, the work that you and your team have done, are one of probably the things that I am most proud of as my time that I've served on the board. I'm so incredibly thankful to our community and our administration, because, you know, I send the two best things in my life every single day to Carmel Clay Schools, and to know that they're being taken care of the way that I know that you're taking care of them does my heart so good. So I'm so incredibly thankful for that. I also am thankful that you help us as a board. We have our own safety and training procedures. And the ones that you guys see when we all come in together and we all go out together, we're not trying to be rude, you know, we really say hello, but it's, that's part of our safety procedures, because we have to follow things, and we have to do things all the time. Because, and I know that you tell the kids that, you know, exceptions are never good, because we've always gotta keep following and keep following. And then the last thing I wanna share, something that is very, to me, personal to me, is to see something, say something. Many of you know that I was leading the board meeting when we had a gentleman drop a firearm. That was probably one of the scariest moments of my life. I felt very uneasy before the meeting in that general direction, and I let an SRO know. And I, of course, did the situation where I know it's probably nothing, but I just wanna say, because you always tell me to say something. And the SRO, DJ Chef, was standing right there when that happened. And so it's really just going back to trusting your gut and to, for all of the people. And, you know, 9.9 times out of 10, it's going to be nothing. But the times that it's not something, you're gonna be very thankful that you did. So I appreciate you educating not only our students but our community to, you know, you may be embarrassed, I was, to walk down there and be like, can you go kinda stand over here? So I just wanna say thank you for that. And thank you in that very scary situation, is I knew you guys were handling it, so much to the point that fellow board members didn't even know what happened. It wasn't until afterwards. The meeting continued, the people in the audience had no clue, and it was because the fact that you were diligent in training. So thank you so much personally for that, for continuing to take care of our kids. I'm just incredibly thankful forever.
Thank you for that presentation, and I know many parts of that we've seen before. Lieutenant Miller, I've had an opportunity to sit down and have coffee with you when I was first looking into this role, and your passion and your compassion for these children is so evident, and it really is so inspiring. And I, you touched on it last time, and you briefly touched on it today, but just because one is a good officer doesn't mean they necessarily match up with a particular school that may have an opening, and there's a culture within the schools. And when you were explaining that, it made so much sense, but I don't know if it's something that everybody really is cognizant of, that each school has its own culture. There may be students, a student population, that really would benefit from a certain type of person, or the staffing there is requesting something because they notice a gap in the services that those children are experiencing. And so the attention you give to that selection process is incredible, and I'm glad that you continuously point out the numerous times, numerous availability of training for our officers, so that, I mean, yes, it's wonderful when we have the training for something catastrophic, but those daily touches they're giving to the children, so they do see, feel seen and enveloped in love and support is so important, so that we can hopefully head off some of those catastrophic occurrences. So thank you all and welcome. I know you guys will do a great job if he selected you.
Greg?
I just have a comment and a question. As I, I think this is the third, it might even be the fourth, presentation along the lines of safety, and I've had discussions with Lieutenant Miller. And I think we could safely say that we've, as a community, put all the resources that we need to put in a safety program that is as excellent as you could possibly expect. And I think we can always say that, at this point, we couldn't be in a better position than we are. So I think that's a wonderful statement for where we are right now, and I thank you for that. I learn something every time I see the presentation. The question to have is a simple one. I know vaping was an issue a while ago for us because of the technology had some flaws or wasn't able to, some of the vape detection equipment wasn't doing its job. Have we seen some improvements in that, and has that helped reduce the vaping incidents?
I'm gonna say the jury's out on if the technology's improved or not. We, just in this last week, we've been able to track our numbers, and it tracks a couple of things. It tracks air quality, it tracks carbon dioxide, and then vape. And I think we wanna see what happens with us with the data, to see just how accurate it is this year. So I couldn't, I couldn't put my flag on it quite yet, but I'll know more as this year goes.
Are we still having, like, staff members go into the areas and kinda keep an eye on it?
Absolutely.
It's remarkably good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Please, hold on. I would like to add on to that, because I sort of alluded to that when I was talking about technology earlier. I track all those things, and really, the majority of the time, we're finding the kids doing this, stop it alerts, staff paying attention. It's that human element that is guiding us to the people that we need to deal with to get them to stop vaping. And like we talked earlier, there's a whole presentation we could probably do on vaping, and I think, Mrs. Jackson, you mentioned about the cessation program. Catch My Breath is just part of it. The SROs in fifth grade, it's about educate, just getting that first education piece to the fifth graders, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's, these kids have probably tried it, we're trying to get them to stop early. We do have more of a cessation program we're trying to implement at the high school. One of our SROs has worked with the county quite a bit to really work on a diversion program, one, to keep them out of the judicial system, but two, to get them to stop. If we can get them to stop before they reach 18 or older, they're not gonna be penalized for what they're doing, make better choices. So we are working with that. It's growing, so we're trying to find new creative ways to bring that back down. But the human element, that's really where it is. The training we've done with the staff, with the kids, we've created a culture that they don't like that. A lot of these kids don't wanna put up with the vaping or anything else, so they're pretty quick to report it to us, and we try to do something about that. Like what you say, is see something, say something, we'll do something.
I'll tell you that the single-bass vape detector are other kids.
Thank you.
I'll just be really quick. Thank you so much for all that you do. I wanted to give a, kind of a side note as a parent, that when things do occur, small things at the schools, we are really well-informed as parents. We get emails immediately just saying, hey, there was an incident, and it's nice. I feel like it's nice to know that we, as parents, are kinda kept in the loop with what's going on. A lot of times, the emails often say something to the effect of, you know, when your child's asked, or if your child asks about the incident, so that we know ahead of time that they might have seen something, and we can be ready to discuss with them. So I appreciate that as well.
I can't help myself, but I gotta make at least a little bit of a comment. What you see walking away there and walking away from the podium over there is what I would call a dream come true. I will say that for all of my administrative life, I've been in charge of school safety. And you've heard me probably say this before, but school safety was always a percentage of my job. It was one of those things that I did in addition to a lot of other things. And when our community got together and passed a school safety referendum, so we could have at least one school resource officer in every school building in our district, whose only job was to keep our kids and our staff safe, it was a dream come true. And not only just because of their presence, but because of what they bring to the table besides, you know, a sidearm and a lot of training, it's the relationships that happen. When I first went to a Carmel High School basketball game, and I saw an SRO going over, I thought he was gonna kick the kids off the court who were shooting baskets. Instead, he organized two lines so that every kid would get to shoot, and he rebounded and threw it to them. And I thought, we're in a good spot here. We're in a good spot here. So that culture that you guys have worked so hard to create is just fantastic, and I am the luckiest guy on the planet, because I talked, David Woodward, and joined our team a long time ago, and I asked him on that night, when I talked to him, I said, have you ever thought about taking all this knowledge and stuff you have and really working it in a school and see what you could do with it? And he was like, I'll think about it. And I kept watching our software for his name to come into the applicant pool, and I kept watching, and then finally, there it was. And from where we started six years ago to right now is vastly different. And I'll tell you, I sleep better at night because of the work you guys do. So, thank you.
Next on our agenda is the discussion item for policy 5522, selection, review, and removal of school library materials. I'm going to start out by just reminding the board that this was a motion that Mr. Brown made, and I'm reminding you that we are not discussing a particular book, we're not, you know, we're not discussing any books that in the past have been questioned. We are discussing the policy, and again, not the administrative policy, but the board policy, as was necessary per the new legislation. And let's make this a constructive conversation. I will go ahead, I'm just gonna go in order. So Greg, go first?
So tonight, we're just discussing how we might-
That was what your motion was.
Yeah, how we might go from here, how we might examine our current policy, and listening to all sides of the community, and trying to see what maybe do we need to make some changes. And I think like a lot of, a lot of new laws that get put in, enacted, once they're in place, you see have unintended consequences, so they typically get revisited, and I think similarly with the policy, the same thing can happen. I think it's happened here. When I look at the policy, and I voted for it, I think we all voted in favor of it, the, it was literally a, nearly, I would say, a cut and paste of the Indiana Code that was updated that went into effect in January. Is that safe to say? I'm looking at-
Yeah, and the policy was not changed that much, you know, the board policy itself, because the school was already doing something similar. The only thing that really changed was our role now in books being challenged.
Yeah. My point being is that we actually, we literally copied in the code that defines- Yeah. My point being is that we actually, we literally copied in the code that defines obscene matters or performance, and matters of performance harmful to minors. And then there are some statements about just what you described. So, it was more of an implementation of the law than implementation of a policy to implement the law. So, I think what we found is that, you know, we were, we had an example of a book that was brought up, and we had a mixed vote on it. We had a lot of commentary from the public, and on both sides. I've listened to a lot even since then, and I realized that what we have in place now is very polarizing. So, no matter if we choose, you know, we're kind of the final call, and that's significant change to the policy and the law, is that it ends with the board. So, a parent or community member can appeal it all the way up to the board. And so, we're gonna take a vote on these books that get brought up, and we're gonna vote to keep it, or vote to get rid of it. And some large segment of the population will not be happy. So, my proposal was that we take a look at the policy to say, okay, now that we've tested it in real life, we look to see if there's something we can do, like look at other community, other districts that have maybe gone a little further, or try some different things, and see what we might do to implement something that, rather than make a significant amount of the population in Carmel not happy, is to make it so that we have the greater majority of the community be happy. And so, that's what I'm looking for, is that we come up with a team. I would suggest a committee of well-represented people from the board, from the administration, and maybe some others, and see how we might go forward, take a look at it, and see what options we might have, so we don't have these controversial votes come up. I hear all sides, and I think as a board member, we need to be representing the whole community, not just one segment. And so, that was my thought.
So, your constructive feedback is to kind of look at what other communities surrounding us are?
Yeah, as an example, and I would say looking for a common sense, common ground solution to, now we've had the policy in place, see what we might do to make some adjustments to it.
Did you say formulate a team to come up with that?
Well, we already have the policy liaison.
No, that's what he's, I'm asking.
Is that, oh, okay.
Was your suggestion to formulate a team to do that?
Yeah, I would think, you know, rather than one person, I think we should have some different perspectives come in, and work as a team, and come up with something that that team would feel, would take us to a better place than where we're at now, and that we would-
I do think we have, we have, our policy liaisons, which regarding this specific subject, I feel like are kind of representing both sides. That's just my two cents on our current policy liaisons. Katie?
The team that you're talking about is the five of us. It's the board. We're the ones that make and vote for board policies. So, do you have any suggestions? Do you feel like the policy doesn't work? Like, I'm interested in, because I feel like we have, what you're asking for, is we have a team to make board policies, which is what we're supposed to do. That's like the number one, two, three thing of our role. So, can you, can you expound a little bit about what you want to see changed, or what you don't like?
Well, from what I've seen, when we create board policies, we pretty much delegate that, and correct me if I'm wrong, to the administration, and it's brought back for discussion, and then it's brought back at a later time for a vote for approval. I would say as representatives, and I like what you said, is that, you know, we're a board of five, but, you know, my thinking is that the board would create a committee. I would like to be on that, since I brought this up for a motion, and it carried with a board majority. I'm not on the policy liaison committee, but I would suggest that since, I think it's something I follow pretty closely, and I've listened to a lot of community members on all sides of this issue, and I think I could add some value to it. And then I think a board committee, a temporary committee, to go study this one particular policy is what I think would be the best approach to it.
Do you have, I'm just following up on this, I'm not changing subject. Do you have any specifics? Because what the board does is we discuss the policies, which is what we're doing right now. So, is there something, so what you're asking for, and maybe I'm confused, I feel, is what we're doing, is we bring up policies and we talk about them. A lot of the times, what Dr. Dudley brings us is because the law changed in our legal counsel, which is exactly what this was, is our legal counsel, you know, the state changes something that affects our policies, and so then we then bring it to say, hey, the law changed, the board is now the quasi-supreme court of a book review, so then we update the policy to say that. So, I guess what I'm asking is, I feel personally, and I would love to hear more, that we already have what you're asking for, so I guess I'm asking for more specifics on, this is the time to discuss it. What would you like it to say?
Yeah, and I want to clarify that. That is because of open door laws and the way boards work. This is not something that we can discuss over email, or, you know, a Google Doc. We have to discuss that in the open. So, this is the discussion for these sorts of items, is sitting here, having a conversations and discussions.
Yeah, I guess I envision some homework. You know, I've talked to some board members from other districts about how they deal with it, and I think that's, I think we need a team that would go off and work on that, and then have discussions on that. Is that not the way we could do it? And I'm, are we, are we saying that we should-
Yeah, we can't have a board majority, because then that-
Right.
Or it would need to be an open, a public meeting.
I was hoping that that's what today was. Like, that's what I did. So, I was hoping that you would have brought something tonight for us to talk about, because I came with a couple thoughts and different things. So, I want to talk about it now. I want to talk. And we could talk about it again later, but I just feel like this is what it is. Like, you are part of it. You are one of the five for us to talk about our policies that the board makes, so.
Right. And this is, again, like you're saying, this is a discussion, as you have made the movement for, and this doesn't have to be just this evening. But it's a discussion, again, because it needs to be made, done in public.
But please bring it back. If you want to have more time, and you find something, bring it back to us.
I can give you my ideas.
Please.
Is that I think we need to have, there's books that fall in the gray zone. It's hard to draw a line. You know, for example, the way the law reads is, it's judgmental, in my mind, that, you know, the key caveat is if the dominant theme of the book is a prurient sexual interest, then it meets the criteria of the law, and it is obscene or and or harmful. The question is defining that dominant theme, or when prurient is brought in, it means it's probably, it's not necessary to the storyline. And those are judgment calls. So, I think we can, we can have different people come up and argue their case, and then you pick a side. It's polarizing. It's very polarizing what we have. I would suggest that we come up with some kind of a process to look at books that are controversial. There's plenty of tools in the nation that can identify books that are controversial, and that when we find those, and we think they're in the gray zone, and maybe that's what the board would vote on when a book is brought up, we say, okay, that's in the gray zone, that book is not on the shelf for just any child. You know, for example, the book we reviewed was classified by one of the websites that we use as okay for children 16 years and older. Well, it's in the high school, so we have kids much younger than 16. So, how do we implement that piece of it? So, it's, to me, it's kind of a gray zone. If we had the book classified, rated, you know, similar to how movies are rated, that this would require parental approval for a child to go, not just check it out, but to be able to take it off the shelf, and do it, either check it out, or just look at it in the library. So, I'm envisioning something like that. When I've talked to two other local school districts, they do that, which is not written in the policy, but they just do it as a matter of their process. And I'm just suggesting that maybe perhaps we formalize that, something along those lines.
I think we have said over and over that the parent is the ultimate line of defense, and a parent should be in communication with their child, with their educators, and, I mean, there's, I can't even remember the number of titles, but that catalog is available through our system, now I forgot what it's called.
Destiny.
Destiny, thank you. Just said it before. And they can see, and this should be an ongoing conversation with this parent and the student, because-
And first of all, I disagree with your definition of prurient. I think that it is to, its sole intention is to cite sexual gratification, which, that is different than a book that has difficult subject matter. And so, I mean, I don't think that they're synonymous, and I don't think that one's judgment, difficult subject matter is, we've heard this evening in people's comments, is a door to start conversations, and your personal feelings should not be the dominant to decide what other families are allowing their students to read, when the parent is fully able to engage with every level of administration here, to talk about what's available to their children.
So, how would we, how would a book that's on the shelf, that many parents would find that they would not want their child to have access to, how do we guarantee that they can't walk, they may get a tip that, hey, there's this book, you may want to go check it out, look at chapter three. And the child goes in the library, the parent doesn't know that, and they can take the book off the shelf, and they can go do what they want with it at that point. So, we're not, we're taking, we're not giving, the parent doesn't have control on that.
Yeah, I do have to tell you that our libraries, at least the ones that I've seen in the buildings, I have, are surrounded by glass windows. So, I don't, and very, like, when I, the couple times I've been through the high school library, it's a very busy place. There's kids walking in and out, there's classes in the classrooms. I, and there's, I can't see that there's any space where a child could hide and read something, but-
Well, you don't know what they're reading. I mean, they just go grab a book and sit down. I mean, I'm looking at it from the parent perspective, that wants a little more control over their child. They know their child better than anyone else knows their child. They may know what they're struggling with, and I think we need to honor their rights as well.
Absolutely. And parents can, parents can already determine. I don't know if you wanted to explain that process, Dr. Dudley?
Yes. So, on our website, we do have instructions on how parents can see all the books that are in Destiny, and they also can see all of the books that their child has checked out. So, there's directions there, right on our website, that any parent can go in and log in in their child's account, and see all of the books that are checked out from the media center.
If I can add one thing, we, there was some reviews done a few years ago. I wasn't involved with the board, but a number of books were actually removed from the school based on the review. So, these books get in there, and they were determined by a judgment call that these shouldn't belong in our schools. They are not age, whatever the reason might have been, age appropriate, doesn't represent our values, I think was the words that I saw in the Carmel Current. And so, these books are there. So, are we gonna be able to, I think it's just a way to control it. You know, some parents are fine with the books, and some aren't. So, how do we, how do we protect the rights on both sides?
Dr. Dudley, am I correct in that parents can indicate books?
So, in the system, they can share with media specialists a book that they do not want their child to check out, so that it does, it can get logged into the system in that way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have thoughts and ideas, but are we going, are we going now, person to person?
Yeah, Katie, did you have something else to finish? And then, after you're done, you can go ahead and start.
Well, I have so many things. You're asking for a process of if a book isn't appropriate, how do we get it out? It's this, policy 5522. The person who brings it up with the library, the person brings it up, then it goes to a committee, and then it comes to us. There is a process, very detailed, about each and every step that a person can go through if they don't feel a book belongs in our schools. And the process works, to your point, because we have removed them. So, there is a process that if you would like to have a book that is removed from general publication in our buildings that it has, and the process works because it has. It worked, we, it went all the way to us the last time. So, to me, what you're asking for, and I'm still trying to understand how I'm maybe not understanding, is we have that process. So, how, what is it that you want that's different besides some nefarious 15-year-old sneaking into the library?
I don't think, the parents that are concerned would classify their child as nefarious. I don't think that's fair at all. I guess what I'm saying is that we had a vote, and we, majority, not everybody, but the majority voted to keep a book. So, let's say we've got an election coming up, and the mix of the board changes. Now, the vote is taking place, and the board is, the vote is removed from the school library. It's not anywhere. It's not in the catalog, it's not in the library at all. That's not what they do at Westfield, for example. It stays in the library, but it's not on a shelf that can be grabbed by a child. So, I think that is a balanced, common sense, common ground approach. We have implemented the law, and the laws, like, so often, don't deal with these implementation issues, and I think that's our job. So, I think just to cut and paste the law in, we found, is insufficient to provide balance and to not have it be polarized. So, I'll leave it there for the moment.
Let me introduce you. I hate to interrupt the discussion, but just in the interest of transparency, we did check with Westfield High School. They do not have a separate section where the books are placed, where they can only get them with parental permission. I don't know who you heard that from, but-
I've talked to two board members, including the president, and I was told that they have some method to do that.
The method is, and I talked to the superintendent who called the high school to make sure there's not a separate section at Westfield High School. I don't know what that is, what you just described, but I just, for clarification, I don't want, Westfield High School does not have a separate section.
And I think that clarifies the gist of what we're trying to do, is that is one of the things you are saying, and I said this before, that you are interested in learning what surrounding districts are doing, as a means of moving forward, of having something constructive. Okay.
Okay, so, here's kind of some points that I put together and prepared for tonight, is, first of all, I want to make it very clear that our teachers, curriculum experts, and media specialists are deeply committed to education. And I feel that they would never compromise our students' learning, and the fact that there's the implement that they would compromise their learning is both upsetting and unfounded to me. Our educators are dedicated to fostering a safe and enriching environment for students. The fact that they would allow, you know, the allegations that they're putting, these things that would be obscene or harmful, I feel like affects the integrity of our system. And I don't like this narrative. I don't like the implication of this narrative. While reviews and updates to policies are necessary, this situation to me doesn't warrant such changes. So, there's no evidence of wrongdoing in our policies. Our policy worked, you know? It didn't work necessarily the way that you wanted it to. You voted against it, and that's your prerogative. That's what we want. We're not gonna always agree. But the policy worked through the steps. There are times when a book will stay, and there are times when a book will be removed. We've always maintained a strong and thoughtful process for concerns over materials. Our team takes it very, very seriously. We want to make sure that the voices are heard, that decisions are made on the best interest, and again, that the parents have a say in that. If they're concerned that there is a book that they do not want their child to read, they're gonna notify the librarian. I'm pretty sure the librarian's gonna keep an eye on that particular thing. And the next thing I just kind of want to say is, instead of dissecting a policy that served us well, we should focus on supporting our educators, trusting their expertise, their education, in selecting materials that meet the needs of our students. If a parent disagrees with that statement, with that decision, then it is absolutely their prerogative, and we want them to talk to the librarian, talk to the teachers, say, this does not align with our values. But we want, as a board, to follow the law. This is what the law says. We don't need to add more additional things than what the law is telling us that we should do. I am very thankful for our media specialist. I know that recently, they've come under a lot of fire for things that are, to me, are personally unfounded. I am so incredibly thankful for the time and energy they spend. There are going to be things that we, upon reflection, are like, you know what? We don't really want that. And that's what the policy, in my opinion, currently lays out for us to be able to do that. So, that's really what I wanted to say tonight, is I personally feel like our policy is good as it stands. We have a very- We have a very thorough process. Sometimes it's going to go the way that we want it to and sometimes it's not going to go the way we want to. And that's what voting does and as a board. So, thanks.
Louise?
Okay. I first want to preface this with, my thoughts and recommendations are not at all politically motivated. This position is as close as I've gotten to anything political and it's a nonpartisan position. So I'm going to speak to you as a board member, a leader, a protector of the minds of students and as a parent. And so I also want to share that, for me, this policy is beyond what the government has said we have to do. Because we had a policy before the government said we had to do whatever. And so my perspective's a little different than yours. But I think we can have, you know, civil discourse about this topic. I'm also a parent that has, don't tell my husband, but probably about a thousand books in our house. He's charged me with getting rid of some of them. But Pippi Longstocking, Hardy Boys, all those, I love books. What I am coming to our team about is the fact that we have some books. I'm not going to say a huge number. Some books in our library that are, they have these very graphic sexual scenes. And I'm for protecting the minds of students and allowing a parent to shape how our children intake sexually graphic scenes. And so I feel there is a little bit of a gap in our process of allowing students access to these books. So as we, as it stands, a student can walk into a library and just grab a book off the shelf and sit and read it. And we don't have, and I don't think it's reasonable to think that we're going to have an SRO-like librarian walking around, looking at what students are reading. So I'm asking, in our process, to screen books that come into the library. This is the same ask. Can we find a way to monitor, to screen, to identify books that have sexually graphic scenes in them? Because I think as a board, we can align on, maybe this is a second ask. We can align on what describes a, a scene as sexually graphic and say, hey, this has a very sexually graphic scene in the book. And so this is a book that the, the team who, who would process these requests to screen books, they could say, okay, this meets what the board has said is sexually graphic. And so this is a book we're not going to put in the library. Right? So I have two asks right now. One is, how can we have our librarians in more detail, screen for sexually graphic scenes before a book makes it into the library? That's one ask. The second is, how can we keep students from being able to access books, right? Take the book off the shelf and read it in the library? Because parents cannot control that at, as it stands now. They, they can. They can monitor what's been checked out, but not what a student is sitting and reading. So these are my asks. Let me see if there are any little details that I want to, I want to share before I ask, you know, I hear your response to my questions. Yeah, I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So I understand that for you, that is a subject matter that's very upsetting to you. And I know that reading things that are difficult or upsetting are subjective. Because for me, that may not meet, or for some parents, that may not reach a level that is the most upsetting thing. Whereas some people may feel reading about slavery is the most upsetting thing. Or reading about the Holocaust, or reading about the, some other, the history of the indigenous population of this country is, is difficult. And so who are we to be the arbiters of what is difficult or should be controlled? We have the ultimate control of our children by talking to them, by setting examples, by teaching them the values of our families. And so I do not feel comfortable, because I feel it's a very slippery slope of controlling where one draws that line for another family. Because I know that there have been instances across this country where communities have wanted to do this very same thing for stories about the Holocaust, because it was upsetting. And if that information is not available to us to learn from, now I grant that they're different subject matters and it's different instances, but it's a very real situation where they wanted to pull the Holocaust books from the library. And I don't want to be in that position of censoring a subject matter because I find it personally difficult, when it would be my job to talk to my child about what we see as valuable. And we know practically that they have access to the entire catalog of books on their cell phones, on their friend's cellphone, on their computers, not their Chromebooks, but all the other computers that they have access to in the real world. And so this is a conversation that is broader and more important than controlling a book. I think that the first level, the low-hanging fruit, is sexual content. And that that is the way these conversations begin and then it's death by a thousand paper cuts. Well, you said that you didn't like the sexual books and can't we all agree that those, those slavery books are uncomfortable? Those should go too, because we don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable that there, we have a history in this country of slavery. So I would caution you to use the same intention that you did for every other difficult subject matter with your children and to use that as the guiding force. Because you raised them, you're with them and you teach them and instill them the values of your family. Now, I know we disagree. And when you disagreed, you, when we disagreed on this topic, though you, you said multiple times, you did not want your child to read it. And you have the ultimate ability to control how your child accesses. You can talk to the administration, you can talk to the teacher, you can talk to the librarian. You can talk to your child, who wants to be compliant because they love you and respect you. So I would remind us, we have been tasked with representing the entire district, not just our children and our subjective views.
Gotcha. Okay, so I'm going to respond to that just real quick. So we are, I might differ from you on a couple points. I think we all want parents to have access and ultimate control. I do think you used the term, are we the arbitrators for cell phones, web and all of that? We're not the arbitrators for cell phones and webs. But we are the arbitrators as it relates to content in the schools. And so this, this subject is really about where do we draw the line, right? To your point-